Yes.
We got a lot to do tonight, so six fifty-nine probably. Figured we could go ahead and start it and call this meeting officially to order. Harrisville City Planning Commission meeting as of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Year is going by crazy fast. And we'd like to extend a welcome to everybody that is here. Thank you for your interest in being here. We love Harrisville. And we are deeply concerned about the things that go on here and want to make sure that the things that do happen here support and maintain an excellent life for our citizens. Thank you for being here. We would like to extend a welcome to anybody that may be on board. Looks like we've got some coming in here and then we'd like to thank the mayor for being here and all of our city officials. Being here, great for your attendance. Let's, you know, what's exciting is that all of us are here together.
Maybe we should do a group picture.
In a while that we've all been here together. So glad to have everybody here. Okay, let's move on to really our first agenda item and that's our planning commission minutes for June eighth of twenty twenty-two. Entertaining motion to, I guess everybody had a chance to read them all soon. Any discrepancies or concerns? Entertaining motion to approve our minutes.
Make the motion that we approved that planning commission minutes of June eighth, twenty-two.
Very nice. Second. Are you all in favor now? Very good. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on now to agenda item number three. Discussion, action or recommendation. Preliminary approval of Dixon Creek Park subdivision phase one through five. And it looks like our public works director would like to stand and share with us an overview of the application.
So we received that application for the it kind of had a whole bunch of different names, but we're calling it the Dixon Creek project and it's around Washington Boulevard. Definitely a little over two hundred townhomes. And we've gone through the preliminary notes as staff and city engineer. And we're looking forward to moving forward on this project and getting going with construction as far as as long as they meet the notes through the preliminary process and then as they come back for final, we'll have them phased down right now. They're asking for preliminary approval on all five, all five phases, but then we'll phase them out through the development and read it back as final as each phase said. So there are a few more concerns to their notes on that's addressed in his memo and which will go over those with the developers and address those red lines and fix those and be able to come back through.
Great. Thank you. Stay with any questions? That's awesome.
I want to say there's three.
There's one right here under this area, one right here and then there's one up here. Okay, that is one thing we brought up is we want to make sure so that they'd be privately owned, but they we want to make sure they function and then they're not down into the groundwater. So that's one item we brought up. We need to verify, make sure that they're above the groundwater so that they have the capacity they need.
Right. And I noticed you mentioned in the memo that the one on the north side has to be built in phase one. Is there a reason the other ones just don't have capacity for phase one?
Phase one includes, is there a facing? One of the first pages. Phase one. So they may have to, I'd have to look back, we may have to build this one as well because phase one's the pink.
Yeah.
I just noticed that phase five included that right there, but you've got the road drainage going to right there. So I just pointed out that that's going to need to be constructed at the same time as
As the road to I just want to make sure as to why that needs to be in phase one.
Just because they have the drainage.
And that's listed in your memo. For those of you who don't know, this is Matt. He's our city engineer. Thank you. Is there any other comments?
They're, they're addressed in the memo. You'll see a little bit of adjustment on this road that it comes up a little too tight to the intersection with Washington. They'll have to get approval of that. They have they kind of preliminary on the access, right? They're going to need
They have preliminary on the Dixon Creek.
The creek, yeah, they're working through that process as well with the corp engineers and with NEMA as well.
We can give a preliminary before they go back just on final.
So, yes, so if you remember, we put in the MDA that the units that still fall on the flip, I'm sure, did not be allowed to be built until that's mitigated.
And just that route, you can't necessarily be built that way unless they can, they can treat it too. So we can't put a big portion of them, yeah. So that's a concern for me. Get it fixed before I
Questions or comments? That's so nice to have this TV here.
The every day development is going to be private except what's the order to decree, right?
So
Just the road is public. The sewer infrastructure will be public. Okay, all the, the interior routes are private. All the maintenance and everything will be private. Whether it's HOA.
Any question maybe? To the north of these townhomes is the rest of the mixed use area.
Yeah, the rest of that area will actually be deeded backwards of the city for a future. Except for the commercial on the ground to Washington.
I just wanted to know if there's that's what they believe they'd be just HOA route.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Okay, any other questions? I think it sounds like we're most discussion ready for motion. Preliminary. Okay. And I got one on here. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, were you referring to questions out here?
No.
Okay.
Just, just on
That's what I wanted to make sure. I didn't want to miss the vote.
Oh, that's great. We're glad you're here. Okay. If there are no concerns. Okay, motion to recommend preliminary approval. I'll take this one.
Do it. I should do all the motions. I'll make a motion to recommend preliminary approval of Dixon Creek subdivision phases one through five, subject to compliance with the memos, the staff memo, at the engineer's memo, packet and all this staff and agency requirements.
Yes. Great. Yes. Can I have a second?
All six.
You all in favor, Sam?
Aye.
Sounds like this, did you say?
Yep.
Sounds like the ice cap. All right. Excited project. Harrisville City gets more land. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number four. Discussion recommendation for final approval of that moment views subdivision phase two, eight lap and improvement drawings. Justin, it looks like you have some info to pass along here.
We're to the point. As we've all been working diligently, planning commission, staff, other leadership of the city, to get to this point of being able to read in that moment for their push pace for that final approval of their subdivision. There still are a few small outstanding items as Matt pointed out in the agenda that are actually other agencies that we're just waiting for final approvals. UDOT should be coming on the twentieth of this month. And just some small others that we just sent away for sending out a letter that contacted me today. Saying yes, I do, everything's good, but they'll send us out a letter. Just one little minor drainage issue that we're working out Eastland to mitigate that and ready to move forward.
Awesome. Thank you for that update. That's great. We're all eager for this project to move forward. Start building. Okay, very good. Matt, anything you want to add?
I covered it. The usual, these last few items, I guess we're recommending preliminary, or I'm not preliminary, sorry, final. We're recommending final approval at the planning commission to not hold them up too far. These seven items that I've listed here do need to we've explained to them, they do need to be completed. And taken care of. They're, they're in the process of getting these approvals. So we're comfortable recommending the final approval of planning commission with the condition that everything's done here before city council.
Which will be in a month. Right on.
It should have been. Most of it just everyone else to sign on. Usually they wait for us to deal with.
Justin mentioned the storm break issue, just the outfall, the use method they've got figure out. They're working on that right now.
Great. Thank you.
So that shouldn't be a big deal.
Actually, they have already submitted their plan for the pond to meet our, currently have a exhibit here that will show what they have submitted so far. Share for my crowd here.
And their landscape plan shows more details on the park. This is more than an idea of what they're working on to divert water to fill up the pond.
So what they're proposing is a tapping into the irrigation that goes through the north side of here that would be non-interactive ponds.
Very nice. Notice the bill was on, welcome bill, welcome to the others that are, have joined us online. Grateful to have you here. Thanks for working on that pond area. That's, that'll be awesome. Thank you. Nice vision. Okay, how beautiful that area. Any comments or questions from any of the other commissioners? Okay, I'm comfortable. Thank you.
And I'm assuming that to pay on this one, correct? Based on the engineer. Motion to recommend final approval of Benalden View subdivision phase two, eight, five, and improvement drawn subject to compliance with Harrisville municipal code. Staff memo dated June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. The engineers' memo dated July seventh, twenty twenty-two, and all other staff or agency required.
Good. Thank you. All set. Okay, very good. All in favor, Si? Very good. We're excited about these projects and how they're going to beautify our city. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number five. Discussion regarding efforts to grant preliminary approval of the commercial site plant with Triple Peaks LLC license, or excuse me, located, I have it. Located at approximately two four four north, twenty-four forty north, Highway eighty-nine. Looks like. Yes. Should have run like computer glasses. Okay, Justin, thank you. I could tell you were just
We received that location for a site plan on commercial development. There, there still is some outstanding notes that we need to have addressed. So we're just asking for preliminary at this moment due to some concerns about how this is going to be structured with, is it all just with one site plant or are they going to phase it out into a subdivision? So is it one site plant to get? So
So the combined with parcels or? So they have submitted a survey and a legal description and I spoke with Mark earlier about how to go about combining those parcels. It was not mentioned in the staff memo, so the motion will need to be contingent on the parcels being combined into a tax site.
To do the follow-up again? What was the partial?
Have the parcel numbers? All the parcel numbers of, yes, I can do that.
Do we need to reference the person?
I think that's awesome. Very interesting.
Maybe on that.
Do you have any folder to the have they all that survey issue that's in the
There is the memo, there's the memo dated July eleventh.
So there's
At the top of it.
So there's one missing for that, the front portion that we didn't have either. There is something changed and I could swear the actual bar was located previously. So we want to make sure we we want to make sure we get all of the parcels.
Show it.
We put one of these now six thirds.
So this is the origin, this is the survey. Make that upside down.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, Matt. There's some three parcels. Which ones are they?
This mention.
So it would be this parcel, okay? This parcel with this tax type, and this parcel with this tax. So zero zero one zero 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 six two eight zero zero four. Yes, or zero zero one zero, yeah, zero zero six two and zero zero four. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so share with us again the intended purpose for using the box.
So the, the site shows a restaurant, fire and grill out in the ground with a swim pool. Kind of reception center to the back, a concession stand down in the corner and then two Astro type software fields. The yellow is underground swimming water detention. Then heats the swimming water out to
So all of, all of the water from those two fields will drain
through their, through their detention system.
Because I know there was some concern about that would push towards the houses. They're on east. They built the vast.
All of the, all of these blue lines are drains. So these are drains there. So you should be capturing anything off the field. The field's also, that synthetic turf has several layers to it, you know. Get past the, you're saying that the cross section of that, it's, it's not an impermeable liner on the water. So some of that rainfall or water that falls on that should be able to get to the ground a little bit, but any runoff is captured in those drains and then fed through their underground system.
Now, my only exposure to turf fields like this in management, they had, they were running water on it especially during the summer. How, how is that being addressed?
These are artificial.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
So the turf field actually uses the same fields that are in, can you, can you come up and yeah, that way. See, and just tell us what your name is again.
Mark Apuna. So the turf fields are actually the same fields that are in the University of Utah, the Echo Stadium, the field, the field house there, the Portland Trailblazers, the Raiders down in Vegas, it's the same exact field. We had those reps come up, check out the field, the whole area, give us a little layout on it. And so with this surface, actually it is permeable. So when it does rain, it will drain straight down. And then still six or eight inches down, we still have some drainage tubes that will lead it out to the side and catch all of it that comes in and into that catch base.
Sweet. So, so what's, what's, what's the care plan?
So the care plan, actually, that's another reason we're not doing part. Like if you go to Echo Sports Arena up here, those ones, they have the black rubber pellets.
Right.
Okay, so that's what makes it so hot. We're not doing, we're actually, they have a, it's a cool, they call it a, some cool, whatever it's called. But anyway, it's more, it's a green, it's light green pellet, does the same thing, but it doesn't absorb the heat. So we don't have to put water on it. So everything that we've done with this is so, we're not using any water. The only thing that we have for any kind of, of like plants, as long as you guys don't really put fake trees in, or all these islands over here, or I wouldn't even need that. So that's really the only thing that's going to be have any kind of waters.
So the zeros, as long as you're good, zero scaping on the east side there, how wide is that?
You mean this like right here?
Yes.
Fifteen feet?
It gets fifteen.
Is that one or is this one fifteen and that one has a little less?
No, this one's wider. I think this over here in the east side is fifteen.
So that is one of the comments that we have is making sure there is a fifteen foot buffer to be able to house the trees.
Exactly.
Yeah.
When I saw that, I, I just wanted to make sure.
We added it five feet and he made us make a fifteen. Good.
You're, you're going to plant a bunch of trees in there and make it look really nice.
Have plenty of islands in the parking lot or do you have issues with that?
See, we're going to ask you about that because one of the things that Matt came up with was, you know, because yeah, you're supposed to have islands. But what we were going to ask about this back part, because you can't see the parking lot from the road. You know, so having the islands in there does nothing except take up parking spots and make it a pain in the butt to plow.
So do you have the plans set this hour today?
So they're, they've been working very diligently, trying to update as we send back comments. This is actually what was submitted for their application. So this is what we, we are going, going off of this evening for your preliminary approval. As they've addressed the comments, we'll work through that before they go to city council, but, or excuse me, come back for final approval. But for the purposes of this meeting, to meet the deadline, what was posted in the packet, this is the site plan that you'll actually be making. Just to clarify, yes. So they already corrected, even as recently as late this afternoon. They have shown a rendering that has some islands in that south parking lot. They've been very responsive to the comments that we're sending back to them. But since this is what was, the application was received on this.
And just to reiterate, the ones we put those islands in this back one, just that we had.
Right.
But we'd like to not have them in there because you can't see it. We're going to have it fenced off at night. So nothing can get in there. But we'd like to have it just so we could have parking and ease of, because like I said, you again, I keep referring back to this Echo's sports arena up on top. There's a parking lot, it's the, it's the exact same wood with nothing in the middle and it looks great.
Well, that code is our code and so they, they need to maintain their code. So their approvals and
Code is meant to be broken.
That's what I did in my memo, to make sure that that's fifteen feet. It doesn't border commercial on the north side. We just, I just, I didn't know if that meant this, meant the fifteen foot requirements. I just wanted to draw that attention to you tonight to make sure that all the surrounding perimeter that borders A1 zone is the fifteen.
Yeah. Thanks for coloring that.
Yes.
So we have this plus all the memo notes, some of which have already been addressed. So that's good.
So thanks, Mark. I appreciate your time.
I have another question, actually. The field, how are you going to manage, who uses them?
So what we're going to do is actually have our own competes, competes.
Okay.
So we're going to manage your own field.
So you'll have teams based from your facility.
Based from your facility, because that's one thing that's up here is getting all kinds of kids that are playing comp sports, you know, some of your own probably. And so what we're going to have is we're going to have comp soccer and comp volleyball. We're going to have, you know, high-end collegiate coaches to coach them and we're going to have our own our, our own leagues, our teams for this area.
And then you just charge?
Yeah, and they just pay just like they're paying anybody else. A lot of their fees now that they pay go to the fact they have to rent so many fields and everybody up here has to drive, you know, forty-five minutes to an hour, you know, every other night for the kids to play. You know, here. And then what's nice thing about it is now it's going to drop it off as far as, you know, parents drop their stuff off, their kids off and head out. But now they come up where the kids are doing the thing, sit down, have a snack or something while they're waiting for their kids to get ready. Turns it into a social event.
So where were the bleachers?
The bleachers that we're going to have in the, right here.
Okay, ready?
I agree with that many fields, how you would get teams to play on them, so.
We've already had, word's gotten out, I've had comp teams already that are established. I mean, LaRocca and yeah, they have called up and at one field, want to lease them out. I mean, they want to hold them, but they want them for just them. They want exclusive, right? Sorry. I'm like, not doing that because we're also going to be able to use fields not for just the sports aspect of it, but for as far as community wise, you know, we're going to do movie nights. Everybody just brings their sleeping bags and their chairs and their kids and camps up, watching a movie. You know, we can have cookouts. There's all kinds of stuff that we can do. You know, outdoor concerts. I'm sure you'll approve that. You know, we can have cookouts, there, there's all kinds of stuff that we can do, you know, outdoor concerts, I'm sure you'll approve that. No doubt.
I know the neighbors will leave pretty fine.
Yeah, so.
Okay, all right. And thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Great, thanks, Mark. I appreciate that. Very nice. Okay, any other comments? Good about forty-one.
We're older, a lot of politicians already, so.
Yeah, okay, anybody else wanna take a stab at this and pass it on as well? Have you? I'm still. There's that. Okay, right on. Good, Kevin?
Yeah, I'll take.
Right on.
We need to have the two partial numbers.
Yeah, three, a total of three.
Total of three, do they need to be in that as well? Mention all the parcel numbers.
What's the one? Generally says the parcel numbers, you can ask the wrong one, or do you want us to mention?
It would be helpful if you mentioned this. Do you want me to link them up to you?
Here, and then the one that got added.
It's the seventeen dash zero six six dash zero zero one zero.
I'll make a motion to grant preliminary approval of commercial site plans at Triple Peaks LLC located approximately twenty-four forty north, highway eighty-nine, subject to compliance with Parisville municipal code, the staff memo dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, including amendments, the engineers memo dated July eleventh, twenty-two, all other staff agency requirements, as well as three partials, seventeen dash zero six six dash zero zero six two, and partial seventeen dash zero six six dash zero four nine, and parcel seventeen dash zero six six dash zero zero one, be combined into one tax site.
Very good.
Ask for the next one. Okay, very good. I have a second. I'll thank you there. Very good. All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Break it, nice habit. All right. All right, approval. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number six then. Follow up, anything from the city? Thank you for coming. Have a good night.
So I, I feel like we've been just busy, so that's the only report, if there are any projects that are in process that you'd like to report on, I'm happy to get that, but we've been working very quickly and diligently on all the development that's coming in, among a lot of other changes that the cities are experiencing, so I don't have any specific follow up for you.
Next city council meeting on the second.
Yes. So. Yes, so a clarification on that, the truth and taxation law requires that we hold a public hearing set by the Weaver County to make sure that they don't conflict with others that are having truth and taxation hearings, so it's set at a unique time on August second at six P M, which is not a regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city, so we're trying to get that information out to the public, it will be a public hearing, and the only agenda item will be that truth and taxation public hearing.
So the things we're forwarding to will be at that meeting?
Right, exactly. The things that you forward will be on their August sixteenth meeting. And they will have a regular council meeting that, that evening, and they will conduct all the business, and that's where they will make a final decision on the budget and any other items, so we have. Yes.
Sure, since they're coming earlier than us.
Yes, they are on that, but there's no actual taking of that meeting. It's just a public hearing.
It's great.
So.
So we have, Justin, do you want to give an update?
So uh we've hired out a couple firms, had some associates to do the survey and the top graphical um survey, and then we had a company come out and do our geo study, we're waiting on the results for that, I've been in contact, have a virtual meeting tomorrow with the architect team. They reached out to me and asked me to put in, you know, some things as far as inventory list of what we have, and things so we can nail down the exact measurements of what kind of shop size and building size we need. So let's move it forward. It's, it's kind of these next six months will just be getting through the design process and engineering process. We're, we're hopeful that come January, we'll have the team ready and have start breaking ground.
Thanks for including the time. Weather.
Weather.
Right.
Weather and other circumstances.
The way things are going, it's probably a small rain.
I think so there. So let's not move out there at some point.
That's awesome. Thanks for the update. Appreciate everything that's been done. All right, any other comments, questions or anything? Okay, well, I move to formally adjourn this meeting for tonight. Thanks to everybody.